About three minutes to speak. Anyone else that has comments beyond that presentation can come up and speak as well, but we would like to have just a representative possibly, or two, from that group. The other thing too about citizens' concerns is we are having, a lot of you know, we're having a public forum on school start times. Any comments or inquiries related to that topic would be addressed when we come to that on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Haley Brown and I'm a senior at Belmont High School. I'm here to inform you of the school committee about student parent concerns regarding the recent termination of Ms. Bosch's contract. Ms. Bosch is a beloved English teacher at Belmont High School. In two short years, she has had a bigger impact on the Belmont High School community than I can describe. She is the epitome of what all educators should aspire to be: intelligent, hardworking, compassionate, inspiring, creative, and innately talented. As an aspiring educator, I hope to one day be half the teacher Ms. Bosch is. In the 13 years I've been in Belmont Public Schools, I've never seen an educator unite a group of diverse individuals the way Ms. Bosch has. She cultivates a classroom setting in which students with opposing viewpoints feel comfortable to share their beliefs without fear of judgment and are able to have gold and respectful discussions. I think we have more people coming. Not only does she unite, but she also inspires and impassesions. I, along with my friend and fellow senior Eva Hill, work as teaching assistants for one of her junior classes. Never have we seen students so eager to discuss the works of Emerson and Thoreau. She has an incredible ability to make students interested in what they're learning. I can speak to her character as a person and a teacher, but don't just take it from me. Junior Alex Schupercroft writes, "I'm one of the students who definitely hated the English subject along with literature, but Ms. Bosch, without even knowing, made many kids appreciate English as a subject and brought many of us to a point where sharing our opinions openly mattered a lot to us. Her discussions and friendliness give me a moral boost to go through the rest of the day with a positive attitude." This is just one of over 50 statements written about Ms. Bosch on the petition created to promote her reinstatement, a petition that currently has 718 signatures and counting. Before her termination, she was elected keynote speaker at the National Honors Society induction ceremony, traveled with a group of Model UN students to New York for a Model UN conference, and was nominated by the seniors as one of their favorite teachers at Belmont High School, all within two years. As a whole, the student body and parents in Belmont are concerned about what this decision means for Belmont schools. Without a reason given, we are left confused as to why such an incredible educator would not be asked back and what that says about Belmont High School ideals. We do not expect you, the committee, to supply answers, but rather we want to inform you about how grave a mistake we believe this is. We believe that terminating Ms. Bosch's contract not only strips our school of one of its most talented educators, but it sends a message that teachers like Ms. Bosch are viewed as not valued at Belmont High School. All of us, the student body, parents, and you, the school committee, want the same thing. We want the best education possible for the students here in Belmont. We hope that there's a way to reevaluate both the termination of Ms. Bosch's contract as well as the system that allowed for this to happen in order to ensure that this will not happen again to somebody of Ms. Bosch's caliber. Thank you for your time, and I would like to present the 30-something page petition and all of the statements that were on. Change out of it.
I should have added at the beginning too, the school committee does not typically speak or comment on presentations that are given during citizens' concerns. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to add or any other comments about anything else going on in the community that people want? So, there, we don't have any adjustments to the agenda.
Potentially.
I, in the interest of time and given all that we have, don't have a chair's report. I'm gonna, we don't have a student representative present. The superintendent.
Will forego because of the agenda.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. So now we'll have the ELA capstone pilot presentation, which is Exhibit A.
While we are figuring that out, I am very pleased to introduce the Senior Capstone PLT, a group of teachers who have been working for two years to update and improve our senior thesis experience for students. The senior thesis has been a part of Belmont High School for 37 years, but the process and the product have changed significantly since its inception. We, as a department, have continued to think deeply about how we can make our teaching best fit student needs and goals. These teachers that you see here tonight have spent considerable time and effort to make their vision a reality for which I am very grateful. We will be running a pilot program in four 12th grade classes next year to try out a senior thesis experience that combines literature and nonfiction as well as multiple genres of writing. Some juniors here tonight may even be among those who self-selected into this pilot experience. I will let the teachers introduce themselves to you by name, but I want to thank you all again for all of the hard work and effort that you've put into this work.
Thank you, Lindsay. And thank you to the school committee for this opportunity to share our ideas. I'm Mark Reynolds. I've been teaching at Belmont High for 12 years and quite a few of them to seniors. And I'm just going to give some context for our presentation in terms of kind of why we formed. Our professional learning team, or PLT, formed up a couple of years ago in response, as Ms. Render noted, to some of the changes we thought we could bring to this senior thesis project. We had noticed that, in our experience in the classroom with this project, students were not fully engaged and didn't always have authentic opportunities to work with 21st century skills like creativity, independent critical thinking. And we thought we had a great opportunity to use the project that's in place and adapt it, to reflect these new skills, to give students an opportunity to work with a wide range of texts, to encourage them to explore a big question, and in doing so, help them find their voices. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we got there.
Thanks, Mark. I'm Rowan Bosch. I've been the facilitator of the PLT for the last year. Nate, who will hear from it in a minute, did it before me last year. Over the last two years, we took the time in our PLT to reflect on the current thesis process and really talked a lot about what worked and so many things worked so well. If anyone was at the Blacker Awards this last week, we saw awesome examples of student work, and some things are working so well, but there are things that we did want to improve. Definitely engagement, 21st century skills, working with multiple genres of writing, having students write in multiple genres. So reflected on the process, what looked like doesn't, researched other school district capstone models, surveyed a lot of local schools to hear back about what other schools did for senior capstones, designed assessment materials, drafted a proposal, created a rubric list of product pieces, compiling mentor texts, a lot of work in skills and what we want students to do and show over, as a culmination of their 12, 13 years in the Belmont schools. And so what we came up with, our goals, we kind of divided into two big things. First, increasing student engagement. So A3-based topical work, a little more text choice, and definitely more variety. So we have a lot of, again, right now, students are just reading novels. We wanted more nonfiction, short stories, editorials, a lot of things that they'll read over the course of their lives also. Multiple ways to demonstrate skills instead of just a few process pieces and one main paper at the end. Then to really work with the district SEL and achievement gap work. I've been on the, on the school SEL committee for two years and the district committee this year, so kind of pulling all that work that we've been doing and are so proud of into our senior capstone as well. The other big goal, broadening real-world application. We really want students to read authentic, diverse mentor texts and get a sense of just different kinds of writing and different ways they will use writing as they go out into the world and mimic these really powerful examples that we have. Again, mimic those, produce multiple modes of writing, and provide more opportunities to apply 21st century skills, especially creativity, critical thinking, communication, things that we've been working on at high school. Our 4C is there, really just a way to bring all of the stuff that we do in Belmont schools so well and show it off in our senior work through the capstone classes.
Hi, I'm Anna Costello. So in pitching this new pilot opportunity of the new capstone model to students, we wanted to tell them that we've taught you to think critically about the world and how we interpret and interact with that world and each other. In the new capstone, you will continue that work on a topic of your choosing. You will ask, explore, and ultimately answer a big question that you have about the world and the people in it. And so again, by allowing students to choose a topic that they're already interested in or passionate about, maybe a question they have to do with the increasing role of technology in our lives today, and really explore that topic in a variety of different texts, we're hoping to increase their engagement throughout the process and really what they're able to do with it as they learn and reflect on this question. Our goal, we told students, is to read and research in multiple genres, including fiction, nonfiction, poetry, articles, op-eds, speeches, short stories, poems, plays, songs, even film. And then from all of these works that they read and experience, assemble a portfolio of creative and critical artifacts that demonstrate their thinking about and ultimately take a position on the issue that they're exploring. So again, like Rowan said, accessing a broader range of texts similar to what they might experience in college where they're not just reading novels, but also nonfiction novels or nonfiction books, nonfiction texts, articles, and then taking that information and showing what they've learned in a variety of different formats, not just a method of meaning literary analysis essay, but also in other creative ways like writing a poem, producing a podcast maybe, creating an infographic, and in all of these ways accessing 21st century skills that we're assessing across all different product types. So we'll talk about that in a moment.
All right. I'm Anne Marie Fance. I've been at Belmont High School in the English Department for 11 years. And I bet at this point in our presentation, you're wondering, what does this actually look like? Right? The students in the pilot next year, what is, what are they actually doing? So they'll start the year in September by creating an inquiry question, like what Anna was talking about, that the role of technology plays. And this could be one inquiry question, or it could be a series of questions that a student genuinely has interest in. And from there, that student will pick one primary or two primary sources, one long-form fiction and one long-form nonfiction. They'll read those two books and then a series of shorter texts, like articles, maybe from the New York Times, a podcast, reading a documentary or watching a documentary. And throughout the year, on top of that reading, that reading and research will inform the writing and thinking they do about their inquiry question. So they'll be writing one literary analysis paper similar to the traditional senior thesis. And they'll be writing one persuasive essay similar to some of the skills that they focus on in the traditional senior thesis. And of course, because we want this, this project to engage students in a more, in a world relevant to today and the reading and writing they'll be doing after high school, they're going to be encouraged to read editorials, but also to create editorials, to create poems, to create narrative and short story, and not just literary analysis. We think that's really valuable, but we also see the value in a lot of different genres of writing and reading. So with the help of our entire department, we identify the main eight skills that our department sees really valuable, especially during the senior thesis. We took those skills, kept them in mind, to decide on the different products that they could be creating for this project.
Hi, I'm Nate Markley. This is my fifth year at Belmont High School teaching English. And I'm going to wrap up the presentation by giving you a side-by-side comparison so you can see a snapshot of what the work is like right now compared to what my colleagues just introduced that the capstone will focus on. So right now, we read mostly fiction, besides the secondary source literary criticism, so three to four novels per student, where with the new capstone, it would be half-fiction, half-nonfiction, so more balanced with different types of texts. Currently, the writing is mainly journaling about what students read and then writing literary analysis essays. So the new model would retain literary analysis, but also have different modes of writing. So there would be creative writing, which currently isn't in the current thesis process. And the final product is really probably the biggest difference overall, where currently it's one long paper, which ranges 12 to 16 pages. And the new model would be a portfolio, which students would present publicly in an evening, where there would be an authentic audience. I know one of the things we'd like to see is a wider audience for the students' work. They're working really hard all year, and then only a few people actually get to see that product. So with the new model, it would be an evening where we would invite juniors to come see the work of the seniors, parents, teachers, and administrators in Belmont Public Schools, the community, where it would be a forum with stations where students could share the work they've done all year, the various modes of writing, the projects they've created, to really show their position on their inquiry question they started with in September. And so finally, the pilot that we are experimenting with next year will include 100 students. It was chosen via lottery this year. We will have two sections of 12H, two sections of 12CP, and students will go through the process that the rest of the team just described. And we, as a team, will still be a PLT next year to talk about the experiences students are having, to tweak aspects of the process, to make it even better, with the hope that the following year, this is the new thesis model for all seniors. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for the presentation.
Do you need to answer a few questions?
Yes, does anyone have any questions? Andrew.
Yeah, so when you presented this idea to the curriculum subcommittee, you showed some of the, I forget the phrase you used, the types of product. Can you give a little bit more detail, because I, about the products that you hope that students can produce? Because I found some of those very exciting and very interesting and very innovative. Can you elaborate on that a bit?
I think most of those things, if you hit escape, you can find the tabs on the top.
Yeah. There we go.
Actually, it's, this I was thinking.
Oh, the chart.
That's there too, the spreadsheet.
Yes.
So as you can see, we, these are the eight skills that we identified, with the whole department as being really important for readers and writers in today's world. And we brainstormed all the different genres that we're reading and we're writing after high school and during high school too, to be brave. And we decided on these, I think, maybe 12, 12 or so. And the C stands for this editorial could show this skill. And the M stands for this review must show this skill. So it's the beginnings of how we will assess that all seniors in the capstone meet or exceed the skills that we've identified as important.
Yeah, so I think Anne Marie explained that well, and I would just add that this is where the student engagement piece comes in. So all students must demonstrate mastery of these eight skills. But you can choose from a variety of different ways to show those skills over the course of the year. And as you can see, they range from creating an ad campaign or a podcast to designing a comic book or writing a short story. So over the course of the year, students will be demonstrating their learning of these eight skills across various modes, not just writing a traditional, you know, five paragraph essay type format.
Anyone else? Questions? Tara.
I just have a comment, which is, I think that the scope of what you guys have come up with is very impressive. I've participated in PLTs myself, and to come up with such a meaningful and wide-ranging project, I think represents a lot of really hard work, and so I just want to say how impressive I think your product is.
First of all, thank you all for coming tonight. I really appreciate it, and thank you, Lindsay, for being here as well to introduce. I think it's great that the authentic piece of what the students want to learn about and ask about and find out more about drives everything. So I, not only do I appreciate that beginning part, but then the end part, to be able to show your work in an authentic way truly represents a great experience for learning. We were just at the Community Service Awards, and we talked about how important the community service is that students do, but also it's generated by something that they're interested in, and that really, that that choice and that interest drives the learning so farther for students to explore. And then to transfer that over to how the PLT model gives teachers the ability to authentically choose something that they want to learn about, explore it, and go at it for a period of time, whether it's one year, two years, share it with their peers, and then have that potentially, and in some cases, shape the curriculum that they, and the work that they do every day. It's also an authentic approach to what is interesting for teachers and ultimately shapes the learning that we all do together professionally and can shape the curriculum. So I just think it's a, it's a real testimony to what we're trying to reinforce for children and students in their learning and professionally with our, with our teachers as well. So I truly thank you all for taking part in providing not only a great experience for yourself, but the students, but then in retrospect for the district, because this will be something that will be considered as part of the curriculum, which I think is really great for the district, so thank you.
And I would just add to your comment, Tara, that I think that when you all started out this work a year, two years ago, you, you didn't probably imagine that it would take as long as it did, and I appreciate your tenacity because, and I appreciate Lindsay's shepherding of the work, because when it was first brought to me as an idea, I said, well, I don't think it's fully there yet. And you could have, and you took that feedback and you kept working on it and you kept, and you came up with a really solid, ready-to-test-out pilot. And I'm very excited to see how it goes for those 100 students and that you'll continue working as a PLT and with your colleagues of the entire department too, to see, well, is this something that we want to scale up to everybody? It's a chance to find, well, what are the sort of unintended consequences? Where are the places where it needs some refining still? What are things that are really great that you might want to do more of? But it really, as Superintendent Palin said, really is an example of continuing to learn and grow both for adults and for kids, and I think a great opportunity as we continue to think about teaching and learning and how do we engage all kids.
And if I could make one last comment, having the pilot be 50 or two sections of RNS and two sections of CP is huge, because it is all RNS. This is, we should be engaging every single child with high rigorous expectations, scaffolding that work, and so that's demonstrated by your inclusive way of having CP in RNS students. So thank you for that, because that's a really big, big part of what we're, we're talking about, is being inclusive for, for all students. So thank you. So I, I don't know if anybody has anything else, but I thank you for your work. We truly appreciate it.
Anyone have any other questions or comments?
I would just like to thank you again too and note that it's exciting to see changes like this occur in the curriculum as we're also moving forward with a new high school, and there's a lot of discussion about, you know, how education is going to change over the years and adapt, and we want to have a building that would do that, and now we have a curriculum that is doing that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
So next on our agenda are trip proposals.
We didn't understand your process when you asked us to speak at the beginning, and so I was just wondering about the process. I think so many people showed up and we appreciate your time and your busy agenda.
But the process, as I explained at the beginning, was that there was a petition, there was going to be a presentation on the petition. If anyone else had anything additional to add, they were given the opportunity to do that.
I think we, we didn't understand that you guys weren't going to discuss it. That was the problem.
We never, as I clarified at the end, we never discuss or comment on citizens' concerns at a meeting.
So I'd like to let the school committee know that we have several trips, I believe, four, that are in front of you for a read and a vote at our next meeting on June 5. All of these will be provided in your packet on Friday, I believe. We have a French language students' trip to Quebec on February of 2019, which is Exhibit B. A Latin language student trip to Italy for April of 2019, Exhibit C. A grade eight trip for students to Washington DC in June of 2019, which would be Exhibit D. And a social studies trip to London, Paris, and Amsterdam, which would be Exhibit E.
And actually, I just wanted to let you know that Director of Social Studies, Deb McDevitt, is here as well to speak to the social studies trip. This is a new offering, similar to the trip that you approved last year that's going in June to Peru, so it's an opportunity for students of social studies to go to the place they've been studying all year. So if you, if it's okay, we could invite Deb to speak a little bit about that. So she's here. Deb.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk a little bit about this trip. So in the social studies department, what we would like to do is to try to be able to bring students to some of the places they've, you know, they've been studying. And so this year, we're fortunate that we're running a trip to Peru in June that's going to take our ninth grade world history curriculum and provide some real-life experiences with students that accompanies that. And so here's the second trip in that line, which is for our students who are taking modern world history to travel to London, Paris, and Amsterdam. The modern world history course is a course that, well, we call it modern history, right? So it begins with the age of absolutism in King Louis XIV in France, goes up through the French Revolution, up all the way through current day. And so by being able to bring students to London, Paris, and Amsterdam, the history that they get to experience while they're there are events, they're going to see art, they're going to be able to experience the culture, learn about the people that they have been studying while they took either modern world history or AP European history as a junior at Belmont High School. So we're excited about this opportunity. We hope that it's something that you might be able to support, because we think it's one of the ways we can bring the authentic learning experiences that we want to life for kids.
Questions about the trip proposal?
The trip to Quebec is also a new offering. We have tried a couple of years ago to take a group to France and did not have enough students sign up. We're hoping that having it be a trip that you don't have to get on a plane to that's a little less expensive will entice more students who are in our French language classes to sign up. So that's very grateful to all of the teachers who put these proposals together and then ultimately travel with our students and take them on these really terrific experiences. So the Latin trip is one that has gone on for many years, and Brian Dunn has, has taken students, oh, I don't know, hundreds of students, who still write to him from years ago and speak of how that impacted them. And then the last trip is from Principal McAllister, and this is the annual trip to Washington DC for our eighth grade students, which will be launching shortly for the 2018 version of that new this year, traveling by plane instead of by bus.
So I want to thank the teachers who sponsored the trips and the directors who helped organize the process and actually, in most cases, chaperone as well, in doing so a year in advance. The reason why that's important and the reason why these routines are helpful is that it are helpful is that it gives students and families a chance to identify trips as they come forward, as they become freshmen and sophomores and can look forward to a junior or senior trip or, and know ahead of time in case that involves some saving of money that they could do or planning financially to be able to take part. So access is a big part of what we want to be able to provide and that time, that lead time that our directors and teachers provide to the students in communicating that provides that ability for families to plan and maybe it would allow a few more families and students to take part than normally would. So getting all this information out and allowing teachers to then engage students in the process formally because they've gotten permission from the superintendent of the school committee really allows folks to plan. So I hope all the, all the folks behind the scenes that do that work in advance for the benefit of our students and families.
Another question. With the new, the social studies class, would that be open to students who are enrolled in those classes currently?
Yeah, so current, so that would be next year's juniors and seniors.
Great. There's explicit language, I think, just a few words about have taken or are currently enrolled in the other things, just to make it explicit of those students.
So those are, those are all, those are required history classes for our juniors.
Perfect.
But I wanted to make sure that I made the connection to you about the curriculum class.
Does anyone have any other questions about any of the projects or comments? Okay, so there's no world vote on them at our next meeting. So next on the agenda is the fiscal year 19 budget vote.
So I want to thank Tony DeColigero for his work on the budget for fiscal 19. This has been a subject that we've been meeting on and have presented at school committee on since I believe January of 2018 in preparation for next school year. We did a lengthy presentation at this table back in January, February. We met with the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant Committee and made a lengthy presentation to that full body as well, all, both of which were on TV. Several weeks back, we came back here at the school committee table to do a summary of the budget that we like to remind folks of and see if there's any changes to the budget that we proposed to town meeting on June 4, Monday, June...
The Wednesday.
Yeah, Monday.
Fourth, Monday.
Fourth, yeah.
Yeah, Monday, June 4th, the second night of town meeting. So we like to have our school committee vote the budget leading into our town meeting sessions, which will be prior to our next school committee meeting. So we provided you the summary of what we presented last time with a few more slides that we'll provide to the Warrant Committee, I mean to town meeting body on June 4. And we'd like to have a vote going into town meeting as part of our process. So there's no changes in what we presented to you last time. This is just our chance now to take a final vote.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the budget? Do we have a motion to approve? So Andrea?
Second.
All those in favor? Ananmas? So we're running ahead of schedule for the start times public forum that we have starting at 7:45. My opinion is whether or not people would be arriving, but...
We're starting a little ahead of time. We advertised time.
Yes. It was advertised for 7:30.
But I think the flyer said 7:40. We had a couple of iterations about the time. I think the flyer said 7:45, but...
So we can just give a general update about where we are with the discussion around starting school later and then we can lead that into your instructions. So as a district, we are looking to start school later for our high school students and the discussion over the last year or so has been in some districts surrounding us to start high school aged students later for their health and benefit in a lot of different ways that we'll find out about tonight. In Belmont, that, that decision or that discussion has been impacted, like many other things in Belmont Public Schools, by our change in our configuration and our new school that we're building over the next few years. And the reason why that came into play was that there very well may be in the next few years when we get ready to open that 7 through 12 school, Belmont High Upper and Belmont Lower, that we may need to change start times for all of our schools at that point in time. So as we discussed that issue, Andrea and I have been talking about, maybe we should pilot or do something just at the high school. Maybe we should just look at what we can do internally. So we formed a task force of high school educators to look at that work. We felt it was important to update the community on the impact of getting more sleep and having a speaker here tonight who's an expert in that field is very helpful for our community. We can reference this meeting and we can reference this video for folks to watch. And we hope to survey families before the end of the year to get a sense of some information about how they get to school and how they feel about this start time shift for our 9 through 12 population in hopes to have this dialogue in the fall and get ready to talk about what we can do differently possibly in the September of 19 school year. So we're very fortunate to be able to access very talented folks in this area and we thank Andrea Presswich for bringing us a speaker who's here tonight to give the community the background and the context and the scientific research around sleeping and adolescent sleep and the benefits of that. So thank you Andrea.
Okay. Well, I'm absolutely thrilled to introduce Professor Judith Owens. As an astronomer, I think I can safely say that listening to, having a talk by Professor Owens on adolescent sleep is a bit like hearing a seminar on general relativity by A. Einstein. As many of you know, in 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a position statement saying that encouraging all schools to start later at around 8:30 for, for health reasons. Professor Owens is the lead author on that position statement. She is currently the Director of Sleep Medicine at Boston Children's Hospital in Boston and a Professor of Neurology at Harvard Medical School. She's an internationally known, recognized expert on pediatric sleep and the author of over 150 original research and review articles in peer-reviewed journals, chapters, and books on the topic. So I guess that's about all I have to say about you. So that's fine.
That's great. Thank you for the introduction. So welcome, everybody, and thank you for asking me to present this evening. I'm really honored to be here and I want to congratulate you all for really thinking about this issue in a careful, considered way. You know, I come from a perspective which you'll obviously see that this is an incredibly important issue for the mental and physical health and safety of our youth and something that truly can make a difference in adolescents' lives by creating an environment that is going to be more conducive to them not only getting enough sleep, but as you'll see in the presentation, really affecting so many facets of their everyday lives. So I'd like to start by just talking about a few common myths and misconceptions. I don't know how many of these talks I've given all over the country in the past 10 years or so, but these are some of the things that I hear talked about. And I want you just to keep them in the back of your mind because hopefully I'm going to debunk all of these throughout the course of the presentation. So the first one is, well, teenagers would go to sleep earlier if their parents just made them do it. So this is bad parenting, insufficient limit setting, lazy parents, et cetera, et cetera. Some teens might need nine hours of sleep, but mine does mine with six and so do I. Take the cell phones, TV, laptops, iPads, et cetera away and kids will be able to fall asleep without any problem. It's really an issue of electronics in the evening. If school starts later, well, they'll just stay up later and it won't do any good. And if school lets out later as a result of a later start time, they'll have to cram in the same amount of stuff in even less time. Teens can make up for not getting enough sleep Monday through Thursday or Sunday through Thursday by sleeping late on weekends or just going to school later one day a week. Kids need to get, learn to get up early. That's real life and they'll survive. Okay? So I want to talk first about some of the biological changes that are going on that affect adolescent sleep so profoundly and really form the basis and the rationale for this whole issue of delaying school start times. So first we have later bedtimes or I should say fall asleep times. So all adolescents experience a normal shift that starts around the onset of puberty in circadian rhythms. And this results in a biologically based shift or delay of up to two hours or so in their natural fall asleep and wake time. So everything shifts forward by about two hours. Now, there's something called the forbidden zone, which is the period of time about an hour or so before our bodies are ready to fall asleep, where we have a surge in alertness that's based in circadian rhythms. And we think that is essentially to allow us to stay up that last hour. As our sleep drive is accumulating over the course of the day, we start to feel sleepy, but we get the surge of alertness to offset that. So due to this forbidden zone, so if you're thinking that, you know, the average adolescent now can't fall asleep much before 11:00 PM, that forbidden zone, that surge in alertness contributes to that difficulty in falling asleep much before that 11:00 PM sweet spot. And so teens really cannot, and their parents cannot, force them to fall asleep earlier because this is biologically based. Of course, there are a lot of environmental factors that come into play when we talk about adolescent sleep and there are numerous competing priorities for sleep, including homework, including after-school employment, including screen time and social network. We know that. But that contributes to the whole issue because exposure to light, particularly blue light in the evening, which emanates from screens like television screens and computer screens, actually suppresses the brain's release of the hormone melatonin, the hormone of darkness which is released in the evening and helps us to fall asleep. So you have this double whammy of the shift in natural sleep onset time that is further exacerbated by exposure to evening light. So these biological changes, the shift in both bedtime and wake time are in direct conflict with earlier school start times. And when we wrote the American Academy of Pediatrics policy statement, we kind of decided that 8:30 or later seemed to be the sweet spot from the information, the evidence, the research that we had. And the more we learn about this whole issue, the truer that seems to be. And that again has to do with this issue of the wake time, the natural wake time, also shifting later. So adolescents, for the most part, are biologically programmed to wake up at about 8:00 AM or later. Now, imagine having to wake up for you at 3:00 in the morning every single day and be ready to face the day, to be on the top of your game, to walk into work. Well, that's what it's like for these adolescents. Because the very lowest point of circadian alertness in the whole 24-hour day is approximately between 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM, when most of us are fast asleep, so we don't even notice them. But that, what we call circadian nadir, also shifts in adolescents. So we're asking them to get up and perform at their best at the very time when their brains are telling them to be deeply fast asleep. And if that warrants enough, what's called REM or rapid eye movement, what we refer to as dream sleep, is concentrated in the last third of the night. So if you have to get up too early, you selectively reduce your normal component of REM sleep. And why is that important? Well, REM sleep is critical for memory, for memory consolidation, and in particular for the learning of new information. And that's obviously one of the key tasks that we're asking students to engage in, in the classroom. Now, what do teens do to try to make up for some of this? They sleep in later on weekends to, they may stay up later as well, and oftentimes that is the case, but they may sleep until 12, 1 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturdays and Sundays. Well, having an irregular bedtime and wake time is a bad thing for all of us because it gives mixed messages to our circadian system. And there have been studies which have shown that having this wide discrepancy, what we refer to as weekend oversleep, between bedtimes and wake times during the week, school days and non-school days, can actually be associated with learning issues and behavioral problems. Furthermore, this doesn't adequately compensate for the sleep that you've lost during the week and doesn't reverse the performance decrements that are associated with simply not getting enough sleep and leads to further circadian misalignment. So this issue of sleeping at the time that your body is telling you to sleep is really critical. We tend to focus a lot on how much sleep we get, but it's also when we sleep. Because we've recently discovered that not only is there a master clock in the brain that governs circadian rhythms, there are circadian clocks in every cell in the body. This won the Nobel Prize in Medicine last year, that discovery. And we know, for example, there's a price to pay for this issue of circadian misalignment. Shift workers, for example, are more likely to be obese. They're more likely to have type 2 diabetes. They're more likely to have certain types of cancer. So this is a critical piece that I refer to as deficient sleep, which not only encompasses getting not enough sleep for your sleep needs, but also this issue of sleeping at the wrong time, which has really significant consequences on mental and physical health, also associated with depression, for example. So the other thing that happens is if you sleep until 1:00 in the afternoon on Sunday, you have to be awake for long enough. you have to be awake for long enough to build up your sleep drive to be able to fall asleep come Sunday night. And there's no way you're going to be able to do that, to fall asleep at a reasonable hour, if you've only been awake for six or seven hours. And so we actually call this phenomenon social jet lag. Think about how you feel if you've gone across several time zones, and typically it takes one day per time zone cross to adjust. So we have these kids who are going to bed three hours later, sleeping in three or four hours later. They experience some of the same symptoms we all do with jet lag: mental confusion, low energy, all kinds of somatic, physical complaints. Because remember, circadian clocks are in every cell, every organ, every organ system in the body. And they all get thrown a loop if you're not adhering to your own circadian rhythms. And so these types of effects can persist for three or four days, and then the whole cycle starts all over. So hence this sort of semi-permanent state of jet lag in which these kids are existing and spending their lives. So for optimal health, safety achievement, the average middle school, and I include middle school in this group because most of those kids are puberty as well, and high school student needs eight to 10 hours of sleep. So just some examples. In Massachusetts, at Algonquin Regional High School, 52% of the students surveyed were getting less than six hours of sleep per night several years ago. 82% of Mascanama Regional students surveyed were getting less than or equal to seven hours of sleep recently. And 41% were getting less than or equal to six hours, and only less than 20%, less than 1 in 5, were getting the recommended eight to 10 hours. This is not only a national epidemic, it's a global epidemic. And I talk to my colleagues around the world, in Asia, in Europe, and in many cases, they're seeing the same kinds of fallout from early school start times. So what are some of the effects? Well, deficient sleep, as I mentioned, the definition being insufficient sleep for sleep needs and the circadian misalignment negatively impacts cognitive function. So what we call executive functions that are housed in a particular part of the brain called the prefrontal cortex. And these are higher-level cognitive functions like decision-making, like problem-solving, like organizing your thoughts and your behavior. Now, what's very important about this is that executive functions are undergoing their most rapid development during adolescence. Just at the time when we're exposing them to a toxin, if you will, that selectively negatively impacts these executive functions. And we know that because there have been studies that have actually looked at individuals, these are young, healthy young adults typically, that are brought into the lab and their sleep is manipulated, and then they take pictures. They do functional, what's called functional MRI, so they take pictures of their brains. And they can see what areas of the brain light up when they're doing certain tasks that involve executive functions, for example. So we have very direct evidence that experimentally induced short sleep has effects on the brain and brain function. I don't think there's any question about that. But we also see effects on memory, attention, mention learning of new tasks, emotional regulation. That's a huge thing. So what we see in individuals who are sleep deprived is that they have a weaker connection between what we call the emotional brain, the amygdala, and the prefrontal cortex, the regulatory part of the brain. So we have an uptick in emotional response with less control of the adult response. And when you think about one of the issues with teens and mood disorders and depression and all those kinds of emotional issues, sleep may have a very important impact on that. And in addition to all that, we know that sleep deprivation has an effect on a part of the brain that controls risk-taking behavior. So people who are sleep deprived tend to take more risks because they perceive less in the way of negative consequences for their behavior. And what do we worry about with teens? Risk-taking behaviors, alcohol use, substance use, risky sexual behavior, violence, all kinds of things that involve poor decision-making and risk-taking and eventually can lead to real issues in terms of mental and physical health. So speaking about health, we know that deficient sleep is associated with an increased risk of obesity. It's also associated with poor cardiovascular health, with an increased risk for high blood pressure and for strokes, for example. It's associated with metabolic dysfunction, like type 2 diabetes. A number of studies have shown that insufficient and mistimed sleep is associated with an increased risk for sports-related injuries in student athletes. Now, I know that in many communities, very understandably, sports programs and athletics are very important to students and to the community at large, as they should be. But if you take the risk of having your athletes more likely to get injured and potentially less likely to recover from injuries because of insufficient sleep, that becomes a very compelling issue. It's also associated with work-related injuries, with motor vehicle accidents, that's a critical, critical piece of this that I'm going to talk a little bit more about later. Increased pedestrian accidents because of poor impulse control and poor decision-making. And one interesting study from the Centers for Disease Control actually showed that low amounts of sleep in adolescents is associated with behaviors that could lead to safety issues. Things like not using, regularly using a seatbelt, not using a bicycle helmet, texting while driving, drinking and driving. So it's not just a matter of reaction time while you're driving, it's a matter that you're going to make bad decisions about trying to keep yourself safe while you're behind the wheel of the car. And deficient sleep is also associated with mental health issues, particularly depression and even suicidal thoughts. And that's been shown in a number of studies now of adolescents, as well as alcohol and substance use. And in terms of performance, academic performance, there are some studies which have shown a decrease in grade point average and academic proficiency in students who attend schools with earlier start times. Standardized test scores may be impacted. And very important, other issues that have to do with academic success, like tardiness, attendance rates, and even graduation rates may be affected in students who attend schools with earlier versus later start times. So as was mentioned earlier, in 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics came out with this policy statement recommending start times of 8:30 or later as being in the best interest of the health and well-being of adolescents. And I think this helped change the conversation to, from one that was just about academic performance to one that is about health. And it's not only proximal health issues, potentially this has an impact on health, like cardiovascular disease and metabolic disease, 20, 30 years down the line for these students. That's what keeps me up at night, is wondering what we're doing to this cohort of students who have been exposed now, you know, many of them for as much as six years, to this chronic insufficient, chronic deficient sleep. We know that this can be associated with increased risk of Alzheimer's disease. So we have to think about the long-term picture as well. So unfortunately, even now, less than 1 in 5 middle and high schools in the US started the recommended 8:30 or later. And here in Massachusetts, the average school start time in 2015 for public middle and high schools was 7:37, which is actually earlier than it was in 2011, 2012. And only two schools in the state started the recommended. Now, I'm hoping that that equation is going to shift a bit, and we're certainly working hard on that, but we're not, Massachusetts is at the forefront in many things, but in healthy school start times, not so much. And there's some suggestion that students in earlier starting schools may be more likely to belong to an ethnic minority, to be financially disadvantaged, and to have less educated parents. So there's also these possible disparities in students who are already disadvantaged for a number of reasons, more likely to be even more disadvantaged despite early school start times. So let's cut to the chase here. What happens when you change school start times? Well, bedtimes remain the same, essentially the same. Or in some studies, in one study that we did in an independent school population, bedtimes actually shifted earlier after the start time changed. Now, we didn't expect that, so we didn't really measure why that was, but anecdotally, what students told us was, number one, they felt so much better. And this was a shift from 8:00 to 8:30. So this was a half-hour shift in the school start time. Students told us they felt so much better getting that extra half hour, that they were motivated to go to bed earlier. And because they were better rested, they were more efficient at getting their homework done, and they could get to bed earlier. And I think that's a critical piece because if you're chronically sleep deprived, your ability to really be at the top of your game and be efficient and pay attention and focus and get your work done is very much negatively impacted. So as a result, students obtain significantly more sleep, and it's particularly that critical morning sleep, that REM sleep, that they get more of. The later the start time, the greater the sleep amounts, but even a 30-minute delay, as I mentioned, can result in significant across-the-board improvements. But I will add the caveat that the two studies that we conducted that moved essentially from 8:00 to 8:30 in two different schools, that I think was the critical piece. So I think you get much more bang for your buck if you go from 8:00 to 8:30 than if you go from 7:30 to 8:00, or 7:15 to 7:45. And I know that schools struggle with that and try to come up with compromises that will work for the community, but I want to caution you to really think about this issue of 8:30, which really seems to be the sweet spot for most adolescents. Students report less daytime sleepiness, falling asleep in class, falling asleep during homework. And so you see a lot of benefits related to sleep and sleepings. You also see improvements in academic performance, attendance increases, tardiness rates drop, dropout rates decline, standardized test scores. And in a number of studies, grade point average increases. Now, that's a tough parameter to measure because it's influenced by so many different factors, but the evidence seems to be mounting that it affects, directly affects academic performance, particularly in those first few morning classes, as you can well imagine. And disadvantaged students not only may be more vulnerable to the effects of early start times, but they may benefit more from a change to a later school start times, particularly those at the lower end of grade distribution, and students from minority populations and socially and economically disadvantaged populations as well. Delayed school start times are associated with improvements in mood, less self-reported symptoms of depression, for example, with health, overall health, decreased visits to the school health center. And this, to me, is one of the most compelling arguments. We see a decrease associated with, now, we can't attribute cause and effect, these are correlational studies, but in one early study in a district in Kentucky, which changed their start time from 7:30 to 8:40, the teens involved in car crashes in that district went down by 16%, whereas it increased by 9% in the rest of the state. Another study in Virginia looked at two adjacent counties which were very similar from a socio-demographic standpoint, but one had a 7:20 start time and the other an 8:40 start time, and they saw 40% higher crash rate in adolescents in the earlier starting school district. And as you might imagine, those crashes were occurring in that early hour that schools started earlier. And then in a study that was published by the Centers for Disease Control a few years ago, they saw a reduction in crash rates in 16- to 18-year-olds by as much as 65% to 70% after school start time. Now, I'm a public health person, and it's hard to imagine another intervention that would have that big a bang for the buck as this is. And in terms of dollars and cents, it was a Brookings Institute report that was published a number of years ago now, that concluded that the three top changes that public schools in the United States could make in the United States could make that would have the biggest benefit to cost ratio, one of those was delaying high school start times by an hour. And based on a conservative estimate of the cost per student, which was largely related to transportation costs, compared to the increase in projected future earnings of the students due to improvements in standardized test scores, they came up with a benefit-to-cost ratio of nine to one. And furthermore, a study that was just published last year by the Rand Corporation looked at, again, the cost of changing school start times per student per year, and compared that not only to grades and standardized test score improvement, which translates to future earning potential, but also factored in the impact of motor vehicle crashes in So they looked at the potential significant economic gains. This would be a statewide shift in school start times to 8:30 or later. And they used this very sophisticated modeling technique to look at each state individually and how much they would gain. The economic gain overall was estimated to be annually about $9.3 billion, for those of you who are interested, is roughly the annual revenue of Major League Baseball. And report estimates that Massachusetts would see one of the highest cost-benefit ratios in the nation. Again, this is a statewide implementation, at minimum breaking even after just two years, and achieving a cost-benefit ratio of 4.5 after 10 years, meaning that for every dollar spent, the return would be more than fourfold the cost. It's a pretty compelling argument when you look at this from a more global perspective. I just want to touch on elementary school start times because this is an issue I hear more and more about, particularly because in some districts, they employ what's called a flip strategy, where they exchange the elementary school start time with the middle and high school start times. And by the way, the history of this was, this issue of starting schools earlier for older students began in the 1960s, when there was an influx of students, the baby boomer generation, and many school districts had to go to tiered busing systems, where they would go out, drop off one load of students, and then go back in the community and pick up another. And at that time, it kind of made intuitive sense, well, let's put the older kids on the bus first, so the little kids won't be waiting for the bus in the dark. And in fact, that's just the opposite scenario that should happen if we really reflect on this issue of circadian preference. So in younger kids, sleep needs are somewhere between nine and 12 hours, depending on the age. They pretty much are morning larks rather than night owls. So they're usually the first ones up in the morning, and they're ready to go. Now, as they get older and closer to middle school, we start to see some of the same issues that affect adolescent sleep also encroaching on sleeping younger students, so that's important to be aware of. But as opposed to adolescents, they tend to be biologically, environmentally, and socially more amenable to manipulation of their bedtimes, i.e. to move their bedtimes earlier if their start times are moved earlier. And there was one study that was done in Massachusetts that looked at the impact on third, fourth, and fifth graders of changing their school start times about an hour or so early. And what they found was, for the fourth and fifth graders, they got largely less sleep by something like six minutes, but the third graders actually got more sleep after the start time change, to an earlier start time, remember, because their bedtime shifted significantly earlier. And parents were able to do that because of the circadian rhythms of these younger-aged children. Is there a sweet spot for elementary students? I wish I knew the answer to that. But the data that we have suggests that somewhere between 7:30 and 9:00 a.m., taking into account circadian rhythms, taking into account not wanting the school to end so late that these kids are exhausted by the end of the day, taking into account safety factors like civil twilight, you know, which is about half an hour or so earlier than sunrise in Massachusetts at this latitude, when you can safely engage in outdoor activities without artificial light. And in many communities, it's sort of a hard stop in terms of how early you can go with school start times for the younger ones. And so we don't have as much data. We need to really look at this, and there needs to be more research. You may be aware that elementary school change in start times was what pretty much derailed the Boston public school system, which was really a shame. But it taught us a lesson in that we have to listen to all of the constituents in the community, and that's really critical. So just to end with some lessons learned, Anna, I sent a copy of this wonderful article that was published in School Administrator, which is the American Association of Superintendents. And it was a very comprehensive article with sidebars about the realities of doing this and the kinds of challenges that different school districts have faced. Some of them are very similar across school districts, and some are unique to the particular communities. But just taking away some lessons that we've sort of learned over time, the support and leadership of the school superintendent, the school board, and other leaders in the community is absolutely critical. But at the same token, by the same token, you have to engage parents, you have to engage students, you have to engage not just middle and high school parents, but elementary school parents and teachers. Community education, like we're doing tonight, is key, as well as community engagement. So my team, I was at Children's National Medical Center in Washington, D.C. for four years, and our team there contracted with Fairfax County, Virginia, to help them implement healthier school start times. And this is a school district of 183,000 students with 27 high schools. And they had basically been trying for over 15 years to change their school start time. And as part of our effort to do community engagement, we held three town halls, we had one-on-one meetings with over 50 separate constituencies, everyone from the janitors' union, to the three teachers' unions, to student council, to Parks and Recreation, to the athletic council, so that everyone, even though they may not have agreed with the change in school start time, they had the opportunity to have their concerns heard. Now, I would caution you a little bit about surveys. We tend to think of surveys as being scientific, and in fact, they can be subject to considerable bias, because it tends to be the people who feel strongly either way that fill out the survey. So, you know, certainly if that's part of your community engagement and sort of understanding where people are coming from, by all means, go ahead, but just look at the results with a little bit of caution, because of what tends to be some response bias that you can see. Just a little word to the Y's. It sounds like this is what you're doing already, but it's absolutely critical to give communities enough time to adjust work schedules, childcare arrangements, et cetera, et cetera. In Fairfax County, the school board voted in October of 2014, and the change was implemented the following fall in 2015. And I think that allowed for a much smoother transition and a lot less pushback from the community. Each community faces different and unique challenges, but you don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, and that's why I think articles like this, that in which superintendents who've actually done this and made this change talk about the process and what worked and what didn't work, and I think that's incredibly valuable. Not all students will benefit equally. Now, there's going to be, there are going to be some students who have to get up for swim practice, because that's when the pool is open, at, you know, 6:00 a.m. But you want to do the greatest good for the greatest number, and hopefully, all students will benefit to a certain extent. What we heard over and over again was the anticipation was many, many times worse than the reality. And many of the concerns that all the teachers were going to quit, and, you know, traffic was going to be so horrible that nobody would be able to get to work, and it would just, you know, be this huge bang, really didn't materialize in the vast majority of these communities. And there had been very few districts which have gone back once they made that change. And the comment we heard over and over again was, I wish we had done this sooner, or, you know, I don't remember how terrible it was. You know, people have adjusted. Change is hard. Status quo is comfortable for communities. And I respect that, and I understand that. You have to be convinced as a community, as a district, that this is the right thing to do. And that becomes a personal decision for all of you. So that's what I have to say, and I'm happy to stick around and answer any questions or take any comments. Thank you for your attention.
So I just am going to explain how we're going to go forward with this, because this is a public forum. We are going to have the school committee members initially, if they have questions or comments, to ask them now. And then community members are welcome to come up, and we are being recorded, so they need to come up to the microphone to ask their questions for someone to respond to.
Would you like to sit down instead? That way you can sit.
Sure, that's what you can do. And I'm going to apologize too for, we did start this forum earlier, because we were running ahead of time for our schedule, so if people have questions for things that might have been covered in the first five minutes or so, there are a lot of people coming in, feel free. But initially, I would like to open it up to the members of the school committee. Yes.
So I have two questions.
Yep.
One question is that Superintendent Caiden said, with PR, opening evening high school that would go from 7:00 to 12:00, probably what, 2024, roughly?
A little earlier than that, yeah.
2023?
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know, and that will mean a grade configuration change out of the entire district. I'm not sure that you'll hit 8:30 for the high school until that happens. Do you honestly think it is worth going from 7:35 to, say, 8:05, half an hour, for the high school as an interim measure?
As an interim measure, yes.
Is the benefit to students enough, you know, it's worth doing, given that it's still a considerable amount of work?
Well, right. And that's, that's the problem, is, you know, whether you want to get it, it's painful. So do you want to get the pain over with in one fell swoop, or do you want to, you know? And here's my concern, is if you are choosing certain outcomes to look at, to gauge whether the change from 7:35 to 8:05 made an impact. You're going to get some good results, but I would pretty much guarantee that you won't get the kinds of results you would see if you went to 8:30 or later. So you then have to make a decision that, well, if we don't see all the outcomes that we'd like, are we going to conclude that this was an unsuccessful experiment? And that's, that's probably the part that I really worry about. Does that, does that then become the reason not to go the next level? You know, if you're saying this is an interim step, and you, you know, let it, make it public to the community that, you know, maybe there was a little bit of decrease in self-reported depression, grades didn't change, maybe tardiness rates went down a little bit. How's that going to play in your, you know, in your community? And it's, I don't have the answers. It's a very tough question, and I get asked that all the time.
The going to 8:30 would mean, I think, looking at start times across the entire district, okay? And I don't think the school administration can do that at this point, not with the high school building project. They are stretched absolute to their maximum. So it's a question of, you know, for us, you know, each district has its unique challenges. It's a question of, you know, half an hour, maybe three quarters of an hour if you're really lucky, or just wait until that time, you know, until the new grade configuration.
Well, I will tell you that the return on investment in terms of increases in sleep duration tend to be somewhere in the order of 60% of the change in start time. So in other words, for a half-hour shift, you might expect to get a 15 to 20 minute change in sleep. And when you look at it that way, you know, I would argue that some is better than none. But again, as long as you go into this with this idea that you may not get the biggest bang for the buck, it may be the only solution that is practical and feasible for your community, and so be it.
For the next couple of years. So it's that or nothing, I think.
Yeah.
And then the second question I have is that there was a group who presented a petition arguing against school start times and later school start times a while back. And I believe they quoted a paper by Thatcher et al. Claiming that you didn't actually see an increase in.
So that paper.
So do you care to comment on that paper?
Yeah, no, I've reviewed that paper. I know it very well. And the issue with that is that they actually followed it out for two years, and some of the improvements they saw in year one were not retained. some of the improvements they saw in year one were not retained in year two. But this was a very small, very idiosyncratic district in upstate New York where all the kids walked to school. Very small high school. I think it's a little dangerous to extrapolate that too far. But, but on the other hand, I think one of the things that we need to do is look at, you know, if we do see improvements, how do we sustain those? And, which I didn't talk about, but I think the missing piece in a lot of communities is not including sleep health education as part of the operational change. Because you got to change hearts and minds and behavior. You know, I would, I would argue that without delaying start times, no matter how much education you do...
It's not going to work.
It's not going to work.
There aren't enough hours.
Right. It's not going to work.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, I think you can get more and sustained benefits if you also implement, embed, a sleep health education. And there, there are many different programs that are being developed now, because we've recognized that that's an important part of the equation. Thank you.
I'd just be curious to hear you say, you mentioned lessons learned from Boston. Are there other things that you would say that you learned from the experience in Boston? I think you mentioned engagement of all parents in the district, elementary parents as well.
So I'm sorry, your question was about...
About what the experience in Boston with start times? Were there other lessons learned from that that, that you could talk about?
Yeah, I, I think it wasn't rolled out with enough time for families to prepare. I think that although, you know, the, the folks behind it were, were very sincere and impassioned and knowledgeable, somehow that didn't get translated to the community, community education, community engagement. Now, not everyone is going to show up to the meetings, but, you know, if you record them and, you know, you, you, you make the information available in as many different venues as you can. But I, but I think at the end of the day, things were sort of moving along okay. And then, you know, when they said that part of the deal is to move elementary school kids as early as 7:15, all hell broke loose. And, and that was a big mistake on their part, you know? I think they didn't warn families, and, and I think probably, you know, 7:15 is too early. You know, and, and I, I know there were practical reasons for it, but, but it was, it was a real shame, because I think certainly, you know, in Massachusetts, we were looking to Boston as being, you know, this, this would have been a big deal. Like Seattle actually changed their start time to nine o'clock. You know, so, so it was a blow. I, I do want to put in a plug for Start School Later, which is a national organization. I'm on their board. And they have a very active Massachusetts branch. They're terrific. Mary Hammacher is the, is the chair, and she just is dynamite. And we're actually working on trying to get a statewide bill filed. But their website is just, has a wealth of information. I mean, it's the most up-to-date, comprehensive repository of information about this, about this issue. So, I hope that...
I have a small question on the elementary school start times. When you say the sweet spot between 7:30 and 9:00, which is a big range, are you saying the start time as early as 7:30? And then, related, that 8:30 high school start time being the sweet spot, are they rolling out of bed at eight o'clock and then off to school? Or, I'm sort of wondering about the travel time that we're seeing for those kids who are naturally waking up and being ready for school.
I mean, nine o'clock would be great.
Yeah, sure.
But, you know...
I don't know if that's a good look.
You really have to weigh the feasibility. You know, if you go to most school districts and say, "You should be starting at nine or 9:30," they're going to look at you like, "No way." Although, interestingly enough, I was at a sleep meeting in Paris a couple weeks ago, and Oxford University has a research project in which their, the high schools in their regional areas already start at nine, and they want to move it to 10:00. And there may be problems with that, you know? There's prob, it's probably, and not just from a practical standpoint, but from a circadian standpoint. So, you know, we give, we give windows where we think probably the best compromise between practical pragmatic considerations and honoring the biology, you know, can sort of get balanced.
First of all, Jean, thank you very much for being here tonight. The, the question I have is similar to Andrea's, which is if we were to try to look at this incrementally in steps and, and, and commit to not getting discouraged at the halfway point, if we try to do something early and commit to it. I really want to focus on some of the, I'm really concerned about the health outcomes. The, I think your general themes were health, student achievement, and the financial impact. But the health impact is the really big deal. So with the incremental, because you only do ninth grade once, so if you started in September of 19, you have a, a large group of students who can more quickly access a different start time, which could really make an impact on their health. So, and that alone, would that, would that be worth the incremental shift alone? Because, you know, I'm not looking for, you know, we don't, we don't need a home run, but is that a good base hit?
I, I think so. And, and I, I think you could look at some relatively novel outcomes, like, are students more likely to eat breakfast?
Mm-hmm.
You know? Are they less likely to go to the nurse's office because they're so exhausted, you know, that they need to take a nap during the day? You know, it gets a little harder to measure things like infectious diseases or visits to their own physicians. You can ask questions about self-reported health. And I would definitely include mental health in that, because one of the most consistent and compelling findings is this decrease in depression symptoms. And we know, you know, that that's an epidemic among adolescents. You know, suicide is the third highest cause of death in the adolescent population in the United States. And the number one cause of death is accidents, including motor vehicle accidents. And that would, that would be another thing that is pretty easy to track, obviously among the older students.
Right.
But you can get, you know, statewide and district-wide statistics on motor vehicle crashes that I think can be very compelling evidence.
I just have one brief point, which is that you're, you're looking at, you know, effect, outcomes for a lot of students. There are small numbers of students who are very, very profoundly affected by this. Obviously, you know, the, the traditional night owl, but also students, for example, with conditions like epilepsy, where drowsiness and sleepiness can provoke seizures, and that, that's really seriously, that can be very dangerous.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, and that's one thing that we haven't done as much as we should, is to look at subgroups, subpopulations of adolescents who may benefit relatively more. There's, you know, I mentioned a little bit about the socioeconomic and minority students disadvantaged, but, but I think you're right. There are kids with certain health conditions that, you know, I, I hear a lot from parents whose children are on the autism spectrum, or, you know, have, have significant learning disabilities, or have ADHD, you know, how much of a, or depression, or anxiety, you know, how, how much of an impact the earlier start times has on their kids.
Dr. Wells, I have a question. It's not, it may not be strictly part of the studies that were done, but in follow-up to, I think, a question Kate had asked, is there a standard estimate as to, from the time, the time between when the students wake up and when school starts? Do they assume that if it's an 8:30 start time, students are going to have it 7:00? Or is that, is that not part of the study?
Yeah, I mean, commute times obviously differ. And so, so that's, that's a consideration that is unique to, to individual districts. But I will, will also say that in the, one of the Centers for Disease Control studies I quoted, they looked at eight different school districts in rural areas, in suburban areas, in urban areas. And, you know, across the board, there were improvements. So you do have to take average commute times into consideration. I mean, I was talking to somebody, I think they were in Florida, and their earliest bus pickup time for high school students was 4:45. Just, you know. So, I mean, you, you do have to, to look at that as a piece of the puzzle.
Now, I'll have to, community members, to please come up to the mic, because we are recording this, and ask whatever questions you have. This mic up here. I mean, if you want to come stand in line, you can do that as well.
All right. I'm Patina Jerebaksas. So I have a few comments. First, I went to school in New York where the starting time was never before 8:30. So I don't remember, maybe it's a long time ago, but I don't remember being very tired in the morning when I was going to school and had to walk half an hour, and I don't remember that being so difficult. Right now, my daughter is in middle school. The bus come at 7:15. In winter, when it's still very dark, I have such a hard time to wake her up that she goes to school without having breakfast, if not, she misses the bus. Next year, the bus come at 6:45, and in winter, it doesn't tell anything. And I think we have to think about it, because when they don't eat, they go in, they're cranky, and they come back, she's tired, and she sleeps three, four hours when she come back from school, and then it's, everything is, you know, and by nine o'clock, I put her in bed. I don't know if she sleeps at nine, but I really try to. And then, the other question would be more like, as a community, Belmont has a lot of students, I know that, but there is only one high school, so how difficult would it be to implement an half an hour later start, or even starting school at 8:00? I know that they have a lot of activities in the afternoon. I saw that programs, program for middle school, sorry, high school finish at 9:00 PM, so they have to go home, and do their homework, and so on. But how hard would it be to implement some, a decent time for basically, because I'm sure she's not only one not being able to have breakfast, because she misses the bus to, and the body takes her to school, travel, and so on. And in winter, it's hard.
Yeah, thank you for the, the comment. Yeah, I, I, you know, I think it has many ripple effects beyond just how much sleep kids get. And, you know, and there are creative solutions. I, I was just, I talked to the superintendent of Greenwich, Connecticut, and they had changed their start time to 8:30. And there was pushback from the community. There was kind of a, a group that wanted to, to push it earlier again. And the solution they came up with was to shave very small, a matter of minutes, because in that particular school district, they had more academic time than they actually needed by, by state standards. And they could, they shaved off a few minutes of each class, so that dismissal time was very close to what it had been, or, you know, was marginally later. So you could, thinking outside the box, I think, for some of these solutions that are going to work best for your own community, I, I think is important to, to keep an open mind about permutations of this that could work best for you. And that's how...
Actually, a sound from out there, this is on, it's recording. Let's see, I think I have four things to say, and then one quick question. And the first is, thank you so much. It is a real privilege to be able to go to a meeting like this and hear an expert like you on this topic. And I wish it had been a little bit better advertised, so that more people were here to be able to hear it. It was a very convincing presentation. I was a student in this school district, all the way from kindergarten to high school, and I remember high school as walking uphill both ways in the dark, in the snow, and, you know, starting school at seven o'clock and having swimming, like, at first period in that school. So I'm all for this. I'm the mom of a 10-year-old and a 14-year-old, both who said to me, "Go, go, tell the district, tell the district." So I think my first comment is, please don't make us wait. You know, we have to, I have one who's going to miss out on the new school entirely, but I've heard about all kinds of great changes in teaching models and potentially the start time, things that don't really depend on infrastructure. I understand that everyone is totally stressed out for the max, but we are blessed with a really energetic community of parents who will step up if there's a way to bring benefits on earlier, and I have seen it. I think a concrete thing that you can do is actually circulate that presentation, send it out in an email to parents. They will read it, and it's really well-written and convincing. I think also, I really love the idea of education. I, I was able to compare my experiences in health classes here to my daughter's, and it's improved a whole lot. But I do think that students still come away with the idea that it's kind of cool to skip sleep in a way that no student comes out of a Belmont education thinking that it's kind of cool to smoke. And we really have to get, getting enough sleep up there with smoking is risky behavior. And I think that, you know, there can be community and education in that as well. So I think those are my concrete ideas. And I wanted to ask, it's very striking to me that there is such a, a set sweet spot across the entire nation, which is so big and covers so many different latitudes. And I wonder about us being so far to the north, whether having such large rhythms in sunrise and sunset would have any effect on start times? I'm sure there aren't any school systems that are crazy enough to have a rolling start time throughout the year, but I wonder whether you would do that at all.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, a very interesting question, and I, I actually happen to have been on the Commonwealth Task Force on daylight savings time. So there was a proposal to move Massachusetts to year-round daylight savings time, based on a number of reasons. One being that there clearly is an increase in things like heart attacks, car accidents, other kinds of accidents around the time change in, in both ways, in November and March. But there were some interesting economic benefits and even some safety benefits, like if it stays lighter later in the day, there are fewer home break-ins, you know, like things that you wouldn't even think about, right? But, you know, one of the issues that came up is, if we went to year-round daylight savings time, then there would be days, and we didn't change school start times, there would be days where, you know, kids would be waiting for the bus before civil twilight, you know, when, in the pitch dark. So you do have to pay attention to those things. But, you know, artificial light is so ubiquitous that it's kind of negated some of the direct so ubiquitous that it's kind of negated some of the direct impact of natural daylight, sunrise and sunset, and it's not, it's not as effective. Artificial light is not as effective as natural light in shifting your circadian rhythms, but I think we're beginning to understand. I was just reading an article this morning about a school in Seattle, I think it was, that is using these LED kind of alternating lights that can shift from relative clear blue light in the morning to warmer, more yellow tones in the afternoon in the classrooms, and they're seeing these phenomenal differences in alertness, you know. So, there may be things about technology that aren't all bad, that we can use to kind of offset, you know, obviously in Scandinavian countries, there are times of the year when there's like four hours of daylight and 12 hours of, you know, or, you know, 16 or 20 hours of daylight. So, I think that has to be taken into consideration.
But maybe not a major.
But it's not, I think it's not as big a deal as some people have made it out to be.
Thanks so much.
So, just as some background, we are engaged with the Middlesex League of superintendents who are all agreeing to move start times collectively. So, one of our speakers talked about after-school activities, at least those that relate to school, will be done in a common way that, you know, at least the athletics and the things that students are participating can do it together, and the times won't conflict. So, that was strategic a few years ago to engage in that. And I will be, to the last speaker's point, sending her an email by the end of the week with the PowerPoint, the article that we've already copied in this magazine, and we'll work with Belmont Media about getting a clip that we could actually have as a link to this presentation, so we can get more folks aware of the discussion that we're having tonight and the presentation, so I truly appreciate it.
Great. That's terrific. Yes.
Hi. So, I just want to thank you. It was a wonderful talk.
Can you just, sorry.
And I was really.
State your name.
Hi, I'm Deborah Kulick. So, I mean, I was really eager to be here, and I wish more people were in attendance. But, so I'm a child psychiatrist, and I work at, I've worked at several large area high schools where we have health centers. And in all of the high schools where I work, we start at 8:00 a.m., and that's not late enough. So, you hear routinely from staff, from students, that, you know, they are really in this squeeze of, they are underslept, under-functioning, and then when we look at the students we see in our health centers, you know, there are real mappings onto their depression of being underslept and then their academic performance being drastically impacted. I also think that the later start times have a big impact on community engagement. If you can start school later, teachers and students who can show up earlier tend to do so, and so there are more opportunities for academic success, for parents to participate in the community, for teachers to engage families, because we know if they're working families, they're sort of cut short on either end, you know, they're getting to work, they're not there for the end of the school day. So, I think if we think of other factors too, like teachers engaging students for additional help, that later start time provides more opportunity for that, and so there are additional benefits to that.
Do you have some examples of districts that you're familiar with that have had successful strategies in engaging the stakeholders who might end up negatively impacted? Like, for example, I teach in Winchester that's moving to a later start time next year, and their, a survey that was done across the teachers is that for many teachers with children, around $7,500 of additional childcare expenses are likely to be incurred by teachers who now won't get out in time to pick up their kids, but also parents who have schedules that are fixed and tied to the, you know, the way that it's always, they've been able to work ties to the school start time. Are there ways that districts have been able to successfully manage that to help the whole rollout of the start time be more successful, or is it just done to be a case of there's winners and losers and the greatest good and that kind of thing you were mentioning?
Yeah, no, and, you know, that's why I would encourage you to read that article, because there's a number of real-world examples of exactly what you just said, you know. Certain groups, certain constituencies have, you know, more challenges than others and have very real concerns. But, again, I think one of the things is that often, very often, the anticipation of the problems is far worse than, you know, what it eventually turns out to be. But, you know, families adjust. I mean, when you think about, in some communities, you know, elementary school starts at nine o'clock or 9:15, and then middle school, when the kids transition to middle school, may start at 7:30. You know, so there may be an almost two-hour difference, and families adjust to that because it's expected, you know, that's what happens. But, you know, that's a dramatic change in childcare and work schedules and all kinds of other things. So, some communities have expanded their opportunities within the school system for before-school and after-school childcare, have funded that, for example. So, I think there are lots of different ways, and, you know, you know your community best, so you, and you know what your budget is, and you know what kinds of solutions are possible. But I think you're very wise to anticipate that and to, first of all, to listen to those constituencies and make sure they get heard, and then to try to problem-solve with them. We had a rule in our town halls that if you come up with a problem, you've also got to list at least three solutions. So, that starts getting people out of this rut of, "Oh, my God, this is going to be so terrible, and how am I going to deal with this?" to move into problem-solving mode. And, you know, I think that's critical in getting people to kind of change their mindset about this.
Thanks. Does anyone else have?
I have one small, I'm curious how, when you're looking at this sleep data, how far back does it go? I mean, a part of me wonders if this is a moment, you know, is it 30 years of sleep history or?
In terms of looking at.
Circadian rhythms, yeah.
Well, I mean, we have data going back 50 or 60 years. We have not such great data going back 100 years, and whatever population you're looking at, be it elementary school kids, be it adolescents, be it adults, we're all getting less sleep than we did 50 years ago. And there's lots of reasons for that, obviously, but the trend is very much in the downward direction across the board. Not good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience that can come to the mic?
Can't pass up such an incredible resource.
Good evening. I'm Maribel Carvalho. I have a 10-year-old in elementary, and this, thank you so much. This is an amazing topic. I really, really support and know the power of sleep. I'm an early childhood educator, and we all know what happened with a toddler if they miss a nap. So, we tend to forget that our 12-years-old, 13, 14, and so forth don't need a nap or don't need to sleep much. I think we tend to forget that. We ask them to succeed in many topics, and it's sports and academic and everything, and we are forgetting the, what's more important for them and their bodies, and as we heard, all the, the things that is going to happen if we don't sleep much. So, I totally support the 8:30 start time. The children need us, need us to support that and teach them a good sleep habit, and as we all know, in our times, we started at 8:00, 7:30 before, but we didn't have the stress of nowadays. So, they need to hear from us and get the support from us that sleep is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
I'd like to thank you for coming to our meeting and all of your.
You're very welcome. Good luck.
Insights that you provided. Thank you. And I think one of the things that struck me and that I've been thinking all along is the importance of community engagement in this, because it is, does have a big impact, and that's a lot of districts have learned from mistakes and how they implemented it. So, something that we need to be thoughtful about.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
All right. More power to you.
Okay. So, this time, we are going to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as the discussion in open session may be detrimental to bargaining strategies and positions. And then we will return to open session following that, probably 15 minutes.